President, myself, Mr. Snyder here, Ms. Trent. All right. Moving on to item agenda number two. Agenda addition additions, excuse me, or deletions. Any comments at this time from the board?
But, Mr. Chairman, there's no additions or deletions to the agenda.
Okay. Moving on to item agenda number three. Public hearing. FY twenty-five schedule of rates, fees, and charges. At this time, we're opening up the hearing to the public.
But, Chairman, we're gonna have a motion for opening the hearing.
Yes. Do I have a motion to open up the meeting to the public at this time?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we have on the agenda today, this agenda is a discussion or a request that the board consider reducing the fees once again. These fees, as a reminder, is what we typically would charge for water connection fees, water capital connection charge, wastewater connection fees, and wastewater capital connection charge. As a reminder, this was also done from September thirtieth, where we, as the OUA, elected to revert the fees back to one hundred percent beginning one October. At a later date, the board elected to rescind that portion and reduce the rates to twenty-five percent of their value from one October through December thirty-first. As of one January, the fees went back up to one hundred percent. Since that time, there's been a request by different folks to, again, consider a rate reduction from the period of one January twenty-twenty-five through March thirty-first twenty-twenty-five in order to, again, to allow people that, for whatever reason, didn't have the time, didn't have notice of the pending rate change, to once again give them another window period for this rate reduction of one January to, through March thirty-first. So that's what, at the last board meeting, there was a request that we do conduct this special meeting, public hearing, for consideration of this rate change. So you have in your board package some of the information. Hand it out today at your place setting is a slight modification for that resolution. We kind of took presumption of the actual dates. So what we changed here for your consideration is the resolution with those dates left blank, deciding what the board action is actually going to be, if any, that is going to be taken by the board. So there may be some public input, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that board members might have.
Board member have any questions at this time?
Are you open for public comment now?
By all means, sir.
Mr. Chairman Brad Goodbred of Chilby Ward County Commissioners District Three. I address this one-two-five-seven-five State Road Seventy East of Chilby, Florida. First of all, I want to applaud you all for doing the extension the first time. I mean, it's a rough economy now for a lot of people, and this is far out, what is this, like four years in the future? Is this John?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Isn't this for set for construction like four years in the future?
You mean the ones that are pending projects?
This project that we're talking about, the expanding the...
This would be across the, for all, it would be for all people. So it would be anybody, whether that's in a septic-to-sewer project or a general infill project coming, coming up. So it would be across the board. So it would be, this is for a specific time period. Typically, the most we ever extend the rate reduction is till September thirtieth, but they could use any time period. What they have suggested is January through March.
Okay. Again, I wanted to, you know, to applaud you for extending the first extension that you did. And I'm here just to respectfully request this other extension that's before you now till April first. There was quite a public outcry of people that didn't know about it, people that didn't hear about it, and, you know, it's quite a bit of money for them to outlay. So, and I'm gonna do my best, I'm gonna get to the newspaper. If this does pass, if you find it you're hard to pass this, I will get it to the newspaper. Hopefully, we can do a, you know, double-barrel job at getting the word out to people so they know that, you know, this is the final, you know, hard and fast deadline. Now, this doesn't affect me, I, you know, I live ten miles out of town, but this affects a lot of people, a lot of people that live week to week, paycheck to paycheck, you know, Joe Lunchpail, and just trying to just respectfully request that you, that you extend this to April first. So, any questions to me?
The economy definitely is not, is not good. My own personal opinion is I would, and I'm going out on a limb right now, maybe like to extend it to April thirtieth to the end of the month. A suggestion might be, I've noticed that coming into town, you have these road signs, it says slowdown, whatever. You may want to consider putting something out there that, you know, about the OUA or something in the center of town, in one of the parks, with one of those LED signs so that people can see it. There is no question that we're under very trying times right now with the economy, and I'm very attuned to know what's going on, because you all know I have a retail store. Retail in our community is hurting bad right now.
Sure.
And we need to help the people as much as we possibly can.
And I agree with that, and I don't know if, if OUA has a public information officer or any way to reach out due to social media or to the, to the print media that, you know, that we have here in town. Maybe we could do a, do a, you know, like I said, a double-barrel job at trying to get the information out. I don't know what the legalities are of, of our public information officer with the county doing it. I will find out if it's not a problem, I don't have a problem with it, but that's something I, you know, it's waters I need to tread first to see, see what our, our legal bounds are, on being able to do that. But if we could just do a full-blown blitz on getting the information out so everybody, everybody knows. I mean, there's always gonna be a couple that fall through the crack, but it's cracks, but it seems like there are quite a bit more than, than normal this time, so.
All right, thank you, sir.
Frank DeCarlo, County Commissioner, District Two, four oh five Southwest Second Street, Okatobi, Florida. John, I think I asked you or somebody if there was any grants available, and you said that you were looking into some of the septic-to-sewer connections?
Yes, that's correct.
Anything coming?
No, they won't, they won't make any, the two that I know of, one that's been filed, they probably won't have anything till June, and the other one would probably be when the budget is signed, so probably, again, June timeframe. There is one that we already have in play right now, but those are two extras.
I see the governor is putting some money aside for septic-to-sewer connections. I was reading about that last night, so I'm hoping that comes out.
He's got quite a bit of money out there for the Everglades. I spoke to her, to Connie, last week for about an hour or so, about, you know, talking to the people, be it Franklin, Grail, or, or Tuck, whatever the case may be, to see what, what's out there. Some of the grants are, of course, are gonna take some time, but we're doing our due diligence with respect to trying to get every penny from Tallahassee that we can for the septic-to-sewer over here. I'm trying to reach out to Congressman Mast, I ran into him on a couple of occasions, to see if we can get some help from him, you know, as well. And there are other people who are not necessarily in our area, who sit in very prestigious positions that I'm trying to get to as, as well. So, I mean, another suggestion is that, between all of us, we have a meeting, trying to work together. You know, you've got certain influences of people that I don't have influence on, that we can persuade them to give us some, some dollars out there to help the lake and everything else.
You know, I came up here once before and asked for the extension, and I appreciate that, because I myself didn't know about it, and I have two houses in the area, which I've paid, but I know it's tough. In my business, I'm seeing people needing financing, and they can't, they can't pay for things like this.
It's terrible right now.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you consider sending a letter to the property owner? The complaints I have is if you have a renter in the home, property owner never knows this is going on, and then you have the other one that gets it in an email that just sees their amount and does it from their checking account. The third one is a direct payment, where, you know, you hit their account every year, they never know that this is going on, so if we could send a letter to the property owner, not the resident, in there, that'd be very helpful, and that's, that's the main complaints I have. Thank you for considering this, it's, it's good that we all work together.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
You did. I'm sorry.
He's pausing for the moment.
He's not telling.
That's obstruction. David Haisley from Chilby County, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just one more thing, Brad Goodbred, one-two-five-seven-five, Highway Seventy East of Chilby. One other thing I forgot to mention is, there's a, there's a financing metric involved in this too, that people could finance it, fifty dollars a month or something on their bill, if I remember, and I think that was not explicitly known by a lot of people, so maybe we could make sure that that information gets out, and whatever information that y'all, that y'all push on this, that there is a, a financing mechanism in the, in the payment for this expansion. So, that's, that was another thing, so, thank you.
Is there a financing mechanism?
We, we do offer a payment plan, you know, the percentage down, and then a minimum of twenty dollars a month. And, and that's, that has been in a lot of the other letters going out, but the change that we'll do this time, that had been suggested, that'll be still notified again that there is a payment plan. You can pay it upfront, you can do the payment plan, but it does lock you into the current rate at that time, so it is what they have to do.
Any further comments from the public at this time?
It's not that we don't, you know, we're not here because we're protesting, we're all good and we're, but they call us, thinking we have control over everything, and it's, that's why we're here, just to let you know, we get calls, and we're just passing it on. We know you guys are doing the best you can, and it's a cruel, tough world out there, so...
Nobody's saying anything different.
We just want you to know that.
We're on the same side.
Yeah, we, we need the feedback, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank, I'm really glad you guys are here this morning also, because this is, this is a tough thing to deal with, and what's coming to Okatobi and the restrictions on the phosphorus going to the lake. John, what's that project, what's, out of the top of your head, thinking it's gonna cost?
So, we're, we have two projects on, on the planning stages right now, Southwest Fifth Avenue, and the latest that, that cost was somewhere around six or seven million dollars, of which we already have, I think it's two-point-five million appropriated, so we're still in the hunt for four to five million dollars for that project. Treasure Island, which is somewhere in the thirty to fifty percent design, it's all over the place on the cost. I, that defibrillator, they had to use that on me, the last time I got a, a price list, it was over seventy million dollars.
Yeah.
I don't believe that. We were, just a few years ago, it was in the thirties, so I can't imagine how it's ballooned up to seventy. Is it thirty anymore? No. Is it gonna be fifty? Possibly. Fifty million dollars. And we have grants in hand right now of about twenty, so we're still thirty million dollars short. It's a lot of money.
And that's something probably the public is not aware of, is a challenge that we're gonna have to deal with to finance this, so is it gonna fall back eventually on the current people that are...
Yes, sir, again, you know, I've, I've said this before, you know, that what we're talking about here, our capital connection charges are not for some future project, it's to pay for projects that we've already done, it's based upon our debt service. So by reducing it from a hundred percent to twenty-five, it means all ratepayers will have to start picking up more of that existing debt service. By raising it back to a hundred percent, hopefully, we can get debts paid off, and then that money can be pledged towards future capital connection projects. So it is, it is imperative that we consider that in this rate reduction, what we're actually doing.
Yeah, and, and I've had a concern the whole time, you know, how are we gonna contact people and let them know? And I've been in favor of the extensions. I don't have a problem with another one, but sometime we have to say, hey, this is gonna be it. And, and I think the OUA has done a very good job trying to contact people and doing the best they can to let them know.
We've done mass mailings, yes, sir, we've done the mass mailings, we've done social media, we've done newspaper, it's out there, and I would also say that the negative stuff on social media at least shows that the word is out there. It may be negative, but at least it's out there, so it's good, negative is still good, it gets the word out there, yeah.
We also have to understand that the spending's gonna keep going, because we're gonna have to make upgrades to the wastewater plant, and it, and I think we're in need of those that would speak. And, you know, that, that it's gonna, it's gonna be an ongoing thing, you know, it's not just the money that these projects are gonna cost us.
There, there's no doubt that there are issues, you know, with the unknowns of the future, and, and water is one of the ones that is knocking on the door. You hear it routinely in the news about PFOS chemicals, the forever chemicals, and we are going to have to deal with that in the short term. It's out there, and the regulations are coming, so it's not just the wastewater, but there are going to be water elements that we're going to have to deal with in the near future. So, yes, sir, it's ongoing.
And I know the EPA is already starting to open up some grants dealing with PFOS, you know, with the final removal at the plant, so...
There, there are some monies available, yes, sir. So again, we're, the, the motion, certainly the consideration is whether there is a receptive element to, once again, lower the, those connection fees for a time period, but I would strongly urge that it is for a specific time, and that, you know, this, this probably should be considered, you know, do what we can to get the word out, but make this the definitive final time.
Do I have a motion at this time with respect to...
Yes, sir, if comment period is done, then the next motion would be to close the public hearing.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Ryan Lap, fifteen-twenty-one Southwest Seventh Avenue. When you did the first one, it was a set price, you did the second one, it was higher. Is this one gonna be higher than those two plus?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
When I came in to pay, I think it was like fourteen-fifty, because I got in on the first one, but when you did the second one, I've been told that people paid more than what I paid. It was higher, so I want to know if the third extension is going to also have an increase in price?
I don't know about any price increases, I mean, specifically, I'd have to go back and look, but what the time period was, as of September thirtieth, it went back to full fees. Later on, the board rolled it back to those previous fees for the time period of one October to December thirty-first. This should be the same process, the fees went up as of one January. If this board is so inclined, they would be rolled back to the price that was in September. I don't know. Now, what did happen was that if they elected the payment plan, it went from a twenty-five percent down deposit to, I think, ten percent. So that lowered the rates, overall, that somebody may have paid initially, but the true dollar amount would have stayed the same.
What I heard is that there was an increase, instead of like, let's say, fourteen-hundred, it went to fifteen-fifty. That's just what I had heard. And the other thing I wondered, and I'm just been thinking about this, how many people do you have that should have hooked up to the sewers and are still not hooked up to the sewers? And what kind of an impact is that gonna have on the rest of us that want to work with you, want to hook up, but still other people haven't? How many people, and whose responsibility is it to make sure those people hook up?
Okay.
I'm talking like, maybe fifteen years ago, or ten years ago. Do you have people that are not hooked up that should be...
Okay, a lot of questions there, let me try to work through them.
They're all related, though.
They are related. So we do have some folks who have sewer available and have not connected, and from the OUA perspective, what we do on those people that are known, we do bill them a base charge, even though they're not connected. We don't do the volumetric charge, we do the, the base charge. Both the county and the city have been quite helpful in helping the OUA to get those connections made, that are mandatory connections, but the OUA doesn't have a building department or zoning, you know, code enforcement, so the cities and the counties, both City of Okatobi and Okatobi County, have assisted the OUA with the implementation of those ordinances that have a mandatory connection policy and involving code enforcement to make those connections happen. So it's an ongoing process. We have a study going on right now, trying to further clarify and identify those long-term connections that are available, and, and bring those folks in, hopefully into compliance with the mandatory connection policy. So it is, it is an ongoing deal. Sorry, hope I answered all the questions.
Regarding the, the payment going up, if you paid prior to September thirtieth and someone else paid after October first, we did have a small rate hike for this new fiscal year, and so twenty-five percent of the new rate would have been slightly higher. If that's the case, then this third extension would not raise the rates at all.
Any further comments from the board at this time? Motion to close the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who is first?
Mr. Snyder.
Glenn.
Okay, and who's second?
John.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Motion to approve, excuse me, resolution twenty-five oh one.
So moved, and I suggest we make the date April thirtieth.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You want to go through April then four months?
Yeah.
Beginning when? January first? January one through April thirtieth?
Twenty-twenty-five.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Close, motion carries.
Okay.
So I would ask if we could get some feedback, maybe at the next meeting on enforcement that you're talking about, these connections, what, what's the status?
John, do we have the capability of getting a letter out to the homeowners as a separate letter versus...
The intent going forward is that we will be mailing letters to the property owner's address, whatever it may be that we have on file for the property, and/or potentially the tenants, and again, we will go through social media, you know, our Facebook, our website, paper, you know, wherever we can get the word out would be that we would be sending out on this. The other option that we have considered, it's more time-consuming, but it may be rather than specifically to the project areas that we know about, it would be those project areas that we are anticipating going into, or it could be to all account owners, whether you're in Basswood or Buckhead Ridge. The, the problem with that is that there will be a whole lot of people that think that they're good and connected, and, you know, the phone traffic will go up, and we'll have to explain that this was a generic letter. I don't know about exactly where we'd end up with that, but certainly the Southwest Fifth Avenues, the Treasure Islands, all of those areas where we know we're anticipating making the connections, they would get letters.
Why don't you put a sign up on the side of this building next to, that we're hiring?
Okay.
We're finding people...
So we have no way of knowing this rental?
But at least people see it.
Right.
The property appraiser will show you the owner, available person, and an address.
So would we go to the property appraiser and get that for all these houses, is that what you're saying?
We, we've been doing that off their website.
Okay, okay.
But it didn't work, because Commissioner DeCarlo has two in there, and he didn't get a notice. It goes to the, it goes to the user, who's the renter.
So in his, it went to his business?
Again, John, without, I don't want to argue, I'm not here to argue, I'm here for the people. But I, we opened up everything, junk mail included, and we, we didn't get it. And I know you said it was sent out, and again, I beg your pardon if I'm wrong, but I physically see that. I've paid it, I can afford to pay it, it's the people that can't that are struggling, that's all.
And again, you know, I don't know how else we can do it, because we send out certified letters, and, and people reject them, and they don't go through, so all we can do is make the attempt, either the address we have on file with the account, or that we pull off the property appraisers, and we mail out that notice.
And, and one more thing, Mr. Snyder, I had mentioned maybe putting up a sign, well, if you're gonna put up a sign, maybe you put it at Basswood, you know, or, or Treasure Island, where people can see it, because, you know, when there's a, an intent to change a property zoning or something...
The notice that goes up.
That might be more effective if you have one at Basswood at each end, or, or something like that, just say, thank you.
That makes sense. Moving on to item agenda number four, consent agenda. At this time, does any of the board members want to pull anything out? If not, do I have a motion to accept a consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, who's that?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Moving down to item agenda number ten, meeting of the minutes of our last meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, motion to accept minutes from the January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five meeting. I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Moving down to item agenda number eleven, any comments from the public at this time? Moving down to item agenda number twelve, finance report.
The finance report was presented at the last board meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum at the end of the presentation and therefore we are bringing back the finance report to this meeting. It's at the board's pleasure. Do we just move to a motion to accept the finance report or do we need to recap the finance support? It is really, if the board desire to just move a motion to accept since it was already presented, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I agree. Is there a motion at this time?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Snyder. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor to accept it?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item agenda number thirteen, legal request.
Again, Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a follow-up of action directed by the board at the last meeting with some additional information that was provided electronically and direction provided individually by board members to me was to change the purchase of vehicles due to a local purchase option and that the local vendor had all three vehicles on their lot, ready to be delivered, as opposed to the other ones that could be anywhere from a week to ten days or five or six weeks out. So again, what was presented at the last board meeting was to purchase a Ford Maverick from Mullenex Ford and that was adjusted to purchase from Gilbert Ford, local vendor at a price reduced from Mullenex. The second set of vehicles were utility vehicles, again, from Allen J Automotive Group and Gilbert Chevrolet had two vehicles in stock for slightly reduced fees, again, following board action to try to do local purchase and availability, we moved ahead with that. So I need motions this morning to rescind previous actions and to ratify a direction given to staff earlier.
So moved.
Can we refer that to attorney? Can it be one motion for all or do they need to be individual?
One motion can rescind both of the previous purchases.
And the purchase?
And replace them, yes.
Okay. Glenn?
I have a motion by Glenn.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Anything from our attorney at this time?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. John Fumero is, I don't know if everybody knows, he's basically a newlywed. He was married in June of last year. So it's his missus birthday today or something. He's out in the keys having a drink, but he sends his regards and we thank him.
Any items from board members at this time?
I wondered if we should authorize staff to pay upcoming invoices from Thorn Run and McVicker Consulting that weren't on the consent agenda because I assume we haven't received invoices yet.
We have received them most recently and they will be at the February eighteenth meeting.
Oh, there will be a February eighteenth meeting? Okay. Very good.
I have seen both of them in the last, I think Monday got them, yesterday. And so we put, that's correct, right, Michelle? Thorn Run and, yes. So would you like to just wait till the February eighteenth?
Fine. I was in the impression that this was going to be our meeting.
No, sir. We have one regularly scheduled.
John, do you have anything at this time?
No, sir. I'm going to save all mine for February eighteenth. I know that's kind of come up over the weekend, our legislative lobbyists have tried to arrange meetings with Representative Tuck and Senator Graul. The only one that was available to meet this week was Representative Tuck, but Senator Graul's office had asked for a virtual meeting. So rather than driving the ten hours up and back to Tallahassee for a meeting, we elected to go all of them virtual, which will be tomorrow. And the third meeting that could be set up was a meeting with the Florida Agency D P that manages the TIF lease we have on the wastewater plant site to open those negotiations with them about the potential transfer of that property from state control to OUA ownership. That would go hand in hand with what they did with the rest of the boys' school property where they transferred that ownership to both IRSC and the South Florida Water Management District. So we'll have that virtual call also here in the next few days to explore the options or the possibilities of that. And all of those items were in the delegation meeting notification y'all received in the past of those projects. So we'll be talking with Representative Tuck and Senator Graul, you know, about those funding opportunities, septic disor, residents, AMI, and construction money for Southwest Fifth Avenue.
Right, very good. So tomorrow's a virtual meeting that you're having.
I know for sure one has been set up, but I think that was with Representative Tuck and then the other one for Senator Graul, I believe, is also going to be a virtual meeting.
That'll be done here?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And again, they're very good. Both of them are very receptive to Okeechobee County, but we are under a time limit. You know, they give you like fifteen minutes because their schedule is so tight and, you know, you have just that window.
Okay. Thank you, sir. There is no further discussion. At this time, I close the meeting. Thank you, folks, for coming in. And God bless and keep your health.